I'm sure we're recording.
Hello, everybody.
Make sure you're.
Hey, how are you?
The folks that want to be in or in.
Thank you.
Is Gary in? If he is not, he's not in yet. All right, let me turn the chat with you. All right, all right, well, if any of you see his name, let me know when you do see it because he is a member and he can get credit for attending and vote if it comes to that. All right, oh, you made it, there you are, right on time.
There you are.
Okay, row hall attendance, Lee.
President.
Catherine.
President.
You were.
President.
Scott.
Here.
Margaret absent, and Jerry is currently absent. So far. And Bonnie.
Here. Okay, the first thing on the agenda is continuation of public hearing discussions for a major subdivision located on Mirror Lake Road, map lot 22711, property of Hubbard Hills LLC. It's 6.78, 6.78 a lot, being proposed to be subdivided into five lots. So I was wondering what the best use of this evening might be. Some of the board members, we went over of what we have so far. We don't have a complete application to date, so we don't have a complete application to deliberate on and rule on. One obvious thing is we don't have the subdivision approvals yet, I don't believe, unless...
One thing I wanted to mention, I was talking to Laura today.
Yeah.
She says you cannot not approve a subdivision because you're waiting for state approval.
Right.
If you're waiting for state approval, it's a step that the math has been, it didn't have anything to do with us approving the subdivision or not. If they don't get them, they could be conditional, and that's the difference. The thing is, you cannot accept an approval application solely because it does not yet have permits or approvals from state or other federal bodies. You would simply need to condition an approval on such permits. In fact, a fairly standard condition of approval, they outwardly still obtain all required permits.
Yeah, and we have done, we have done additional approvals, you know, and authorized me as chair to sign once we do receive those state applications. A couple of us went through the, what is required to have a complete application, and it seems to be, maybe the applicant can point out where, where it is, but there's about, I listed, I have 24 things that I can't find, and I asked Lee, you know, a second board member, to all on his own independently, back and see if he sees some things that we're missing. We need to have, make sure we have everything, all the details, all the information we need, before we can declare it complete and deliberate and vote. And none of us want to deny it, like, sit right here and say we deny it. We would rather work towards getting those items and getting a complete application to deliberate on. Lee, you have something you want to say?
Yeah, and before we, before we go through those items, when we were last here, I asked a question about rights of way versus easements.
Yeah.
And so I had the opportunity actually to be, to ask a question of one of the town's attorneys, his name was Christopher Perry, and this is, this was his answer, and I have this by email, which I provided a printed copy for the board, so it's available. A right of way is a type of easement that allows passage usually by vehicles or pedestrians. An easement depicted on a plan is a right of way when the purpose of the easement is viatic, which is the old-timey, no-hanster way of saying if it's for vehicles or pedestrians. Even if the applicant does not identify an easement as a right of way, if it looks like a duck and it quacks like a duck, it's a right of way. An applicant might, for example, have utilities and other non-viatic purposes for the easement as well, so it designates it more generally as an easement rather than a right of way. Nonetheless, if it has some viatic purpose, it's a right of way. And then it goes on to state our section 2.2A Woodstock Land Subdivision, right of way, show me a strip of land which legal passage has been granted by the landowner, et cetera, et cetera. My concern is setbacks with that and the, the 30-foot setbacks for the houses from the rights of way. And so that, that is above and beyond going through things, number by number of items that are, have not been presented yet. I just wanted to make sure that, that that gets addressed before, because we don't want to waste anybody's time. We want to make sure we get all of this taken care of.
I've actually got something to maybe address a lot of these concerns. We're, given the state of not getting the waiver for the driveway and the three entryways, it's just, just looking at it, it's just, really just not something I can hang my hat on and be happy with. So we are going to ask for its continuance tonight anyway, because we're going to retool this and re-engineer everything and propose building poorhouses there.
Mm-hmm.
It just seems, that's kind of the biggest reason, but, you know, other factors as well just seem more reasonable and more optimal to be for.
And thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The 24 things, we're not trying to be nitpicky or negative or anything.
Oh, no.
But it's, it's a busy plan, and, and they're all places that the, the right of way just doesn't seem to be enough, or they, they're all shortfalls.
Yeah, yeah.
Setbacks, and, and, you know, it, you're trying to cram a lot in through the five acres, so it, 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 thank you. Thank you for even considering that.
Yeah.
But I think, I think we want to make sure they know what the money for.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay?
I agree.
Will we get a list or?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, I should.
We can, we, we can, and, and you can, you can look, we can refer to our subdivision regulation, you can look at your plan.
And when I, when I went through, I actually took a printed copy of the subdivision regulations, and I went through and I said, you know, yes, no, question mark, yes, no, question mark. And I didn't, I didn't count how many things I have, but they're just, you know, yes, no, question mark, and that was the easiest way to, to complete it.
Here it is, here is, here was Lee's work, and he had a code here saying, you know, it's issue, which needs to be addressed, work that needs to be done, or question, or just simply question mark. And so we can provide you with that, and we can go down through them if we want, we'll just quickly down through them, so you kind of have an idea
We hear some.
Of, of, of where, in our impression, is falling short, you know.
Have you given him a copy of that, Bonnie?
Um.
I, I mean, if you can figure it out, my code, you know, I mean.
I will, I will.
I don't care.
I, I don't care, I, I, this is his work, this is the, the document all marked up.
Good luck.
And I made, and good luck, and I made a list, like, for instance, this question, the easement from lot 21 to 24 and 25 seems to be not quite right, or questionable, or maybe it is, we just don't seem, seem to come to that conclusion, maybe, and, and, you know, all, all we were doing was using the rule, and we, you know, we may be a lot of a smidgen, but that's how, some of these things, they're so close, the measurements are so close, you know, they're, they're just exactly spot on or a little short.
But there was no easement from 21 to 24 and 25 on the current configuration.
And Laura had mentioned something about that.
So, no easement, so we need, need, need to get one, from 21 to 24.
Well, they still.
They're doing the plan, so.
Yeah.
They can fill out because they will recover there from five to four blocks, so.
It's going to change everything.
Right.
Yeah, are you now planning to build a road instead of all these easements and that anyway?
No.
Well, now that the driveway will serve two homes.
Two homes, two.
Yeah, we'll meet that requirement, and we still plan on doing a, a loop easement, or whatever you want to, you know, refer to it correctly.
Did you, did you get the answer from that on the, the town's liability on the easement?
We have no liability.
There's no liability.
I just, I just, our.
I, I, just, all right, I didn't have a chance to read it.
We are, we're not liable to.
Okay.
I asked Laura the same question, no liability.
So there's also, okay, do we get to wear the funny hats?
No.
Yep.
Well, just, this is something in general, utility easements, they seem to be there, indicate exactly where they were.
That HEC won't talk to us until we get your approval, and that's.
Oh, yeah.
That's the thing.
And that's one thing that we need, is required on the list, we need, and usually, there's no right of way.
What she's saying, what Laura's saying, you can't require those.
Well, actually, we can, we can require them to put it on the map.
Yeah.
Because it's not on the map.
Okay.
Okay, and the easement, we may have to wait for.
Right.
But they need to map it out.
Okay, that's, that's.
Okay, so he wants to put our proposed utility. Yeah, he wants our underground, above ground, where, where you propose for it to go.
No problem. And it may be something we need to speak to Joe about, but because these lot has its own frontage, I was under the impression that they're going to run through their own piece of land.
But as long as it's.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Then we can mark it off.
We didn't put it on there, but that was why each property has its own, you know, piece of frontage, right?
If they have their own piece of frontage, I don't know if they need, if they're not getting easements, they're just going to put it out.
But, I mean, if the, the utilities, I mean, if, a lot of times, a lot of the electric lines going across somebody else's property.
Well, if they do that, they need an easement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, we don't have to go down through all of this, because the plan's going to be different, but.
Well, we would like, we'll probably include it on the next one.
Yeah, I understand. Some of it might be obvious, but.
So what, what we can do is, between now, because you're going to configure it, and, and some of these would be good, good things to know, whether you're doing five or four, we can, we can share with you these things that we seem to find is problematic, and, you know, there is such a thing as, like, an informational consultation, come in, in between a meeting, and meet with, say, the chair and the vice chair, go over things, so long as you have a quorum, like, a chair, vice chair, or, or Lee and I, or, or two people, say, or Scott and, you know, two people, you can, that is an option you have available to you, you can come in and talk to less than a quorum of us, and it's not binding. You know, they're not, they can't say yes or no definitively, but you might learn something or kind of get some idea of what might fly.
Yeah, we're happy to do that, we did that early on in the process with the.
Yeah.
Two, two other things that are map oriented, in, in our subdivision regulations, it says that all buildings within 200 feet of the proposed subdivision need to be identified on the map, so external to the area, and then intersecting roads and driveways within 500 feet. So that, you know, I mean, it's in our subdivision regulations, but that was missing on the maps. The other thing that was missing were the building and the setback lines, usually they have like a dotted line that is, okay, this is the setback line, and this is, so, so we can see as, I mean, I have my magnifying glass in handy because I know what I'm looking at, and, and there's no, it's just so it's obvious where the setbacks are, and it's helpful to us, but again, those are in.
Show where the setbacks are, maybe you have the building itself.
Right, like, if there's a 15-foot setback for building, you, you have the dotted line go all the way.
And that'll make it all easier when we're looking at the buildings.
Exactly.
Sure.
Yeah, no problem. Anyway, that's, those are the big, those are the big.
Those are the parking, we provide the seem-to-be little empty parking arrangements.
Joe knows.
Yeah, Joe, Joe.
Yeah.
So, we have a plan, thank you, and we can work together in between, a subgroup and a subcommittee of this group can, if you have questions of us, want clarification before you spend money or design something else, but thank you for acknowledging we were struggling by being quite a busy, ambitious endeavor here.
I, I think the, the new plan will make it much more palatable for, for you in, in a lot of ways. We bring the wellfields back up, we have more space for the septic, but that separates the houses, the property lines become more normal.
Thank you.
I mean, some of them look like someone played hangman, but that was, Joe did a great job.
He did a great job.
He did.
Yeah, I mean, the, the state refinement, so minimum lot size, just unbelievable. You're not allowed to count the square footage in the well circles, you're not allowed to count the square footage of the drop-off soil or has, has a plan, it's kind of an involved formula that they use, and he did a good job, we just met, we just barely met the state refinement.
Thank you. Thank you.
So this will make it much better.
Much, much better, it was busy, we had septic systems under buildings, and, you know, I, it, it can't help but be a better neighborhood for years to come and enjoyment of the residents within, so thank you for realizing that.
Can I ask a question?
We can take, would, would you welcome hearing input from the neighbors?
Yes, absolutely, but I couldn't write as fast as you guys can talk. Are we going to get a list, the specific things on, on Lee's?
Well, we can either read them right now, but, or we can provide them to you. Lee, you and I want to get together and provide them a list shortly thereafter, or do you want me to read down to the list? And now we got a different plan for one or five.
Yeah.
Um.
Can you think of serox in that, or is it?
Boy, is it how, how complicated it is.
I mean, I don't, you could, you could just take.
If we could take that, what else?
I'd say, can you pass my thing down?
Yep, he had, he had two ways, I wrote it, I wrote it my awful handwriting.
Well, that's why.
He wrote it on the plan.
So listen, listen.
Okay.
Are there things on yours?
I wrote some things that were just general, you know, and you can see viability, you know, and some viability.
I tried.
Then I made a, so that's issues that need to be addressed, need to be worked on, okay, so this is my script.
On my awful writing, you can.
And, you know, I mean.
Everything will help.
I kind of, right?
Okay.
And I have question marks, you know, and I don't know, I don't know what that, but that's not me, but anyway, it's been simple.
You marked them off, I mean, that's.
Anybody's super helpful, right?
You don't want to get a copy?
Okay.
I don't, I have no problem with you guys having a copy, you know that the board did not vote on that.
No, I understand.
You're on the board, and.
Yeah, so let me give this to Bonnie, and she'll figure out a way to have you.
What's your name, Kenny?
Kenny.
Okay, that sounds all right, yeah.
No, that's.
All right.
Bonnie?
I.
They, they'll just take a copy of this.
All right, and they took a copy of my list, too.
All right.
I just provided it, he took it with the camera, so, and that's okay. Now try to read.
You can go ahead and move and make a copy of that.
Now try, yeah, and we'll get you a better copy, but you, you get the sense, you know, it, you get the sense.
Yeah. Mr., Mr. Jacob's had a question.
And let's now take advantage of this opportunity to hear from people in the neighborhood, and they may have ideas, too, that the applicant wants to consider.
I don't have any ideas, I just have a question.
All right, identify yourself.
There's a secret on Mirror Lake Road, Mirror Lake Road, who's, who will butt some as you go up the hill?
And will you state your name and then, for the record?
Michael Jacob.
Michael Jacob, and.
I just want to know where the four driveways are going to fit in 150 feet.
All right, do you?
Well, it's two, it'll be two, it's going to be two driveways now.
So it's not four?
No, it's going to be two driveways.
Okay, so who will butt either side of your east lane?
Well, one of butter would be Hans Herzog, and the other one would be Jason Tuniel. Just north end or east and west of the property.
With your plan, we kind of generate two drives.
Right.
Right.
Eight, seven, two house, trucks.
Okay, now it makes sense.
And that would deal with Keith Law's issue.
Correct. He is, yeah, exactly.
The one thing I would like to acknowledge is the letter that we received from Joyce's attorney.
We're not required to do any of those.
No, we're not.
Yeah.
But with, I agree with that, but within our planning subdivision regulations, we have section 4.19 on sediment and erosion control, and I know that when you guys said that you had done a runoff test, it wasn't, nothing was done looking forward. And one of our divisions is that they should accommodate the increased runoff caused by paint, soil, and surface movements during and after development. So we know what's happening now, but there's been no study that's done for what's happening after, and I did a little bit of research on that, and clearly, there's a lot of issues that happen when you remove trees, that really drastically changes a lot and the dynamics of that. But there's modeling tools that they use, HydroCAD, there's a, the ETA has a stormwater management model, and I think that if you guys had somebody run one of those, that you could ease the minds of people that are concerned that there's going to be after, not now, but after you did trees are cut and you have the pavement that goes down, there's all of that order that rushes in a different way. If somebody could do, run one of those models, just to see what that would be.
From the latest plan that we had brought last time.
Yeah.
There was a, the storm drainage, the drainage calculations that were done on the right, right-hand point of that plan, one is current conditions, one is post-development, and the fusion of the HydroCAD model, it is, it is.
It was, okay.
The ETA.
Oh, that, there it is, okay.
It is on there, and so it, it will also be on the next one.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, and, and we should acknowledge, and, and, and reasons for the record, we did receive a, a letter from, from a butter. Hey, Ellie, this is written by the attorney, and it represents Joyce Abagold. We received a letter with concerns, and we received an email from another party, Rose, Relyo and David, Relyo? All right, excuse me, we received an email from them.
Well, she had a complaint.
Yeah.
I think that was respectful of the neighborhood that you have adjusted the plan to accommodate four homes suggested by Keith Law
instead of having a five plan, and I hope that that's respectful.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, and if you want our copies of the email, what they have on their mind.
Yeah, sure.
And what their concerns are, okay, other people in the audience that have a concern, a comment, or anything else they want to say to the butter as they draft a new plan?
So we suspend the, or how do we do it now?
Um, we can continue.
Okay.
We can continue it.
We definitely want to move along.
To, to June, you want us to continue it?
Unless we can meet earlier than that, it depends on Joe, getting Joe back to the.
Yeah, it's going to, it's going to take him a month or two, or you would think two or two weeks.
Well, I think a good plan for us to be, continue another month as normal.
Yeah.
And then we will plan on meeting to review, in the meantime.
Yeah, and if you can, if you can get us the information, not on the, not on the day of.
No, I'll call.
Yeah, I mean, with those easements, I was like a.
Yeah, that was tricky.
But, you know, 10 days beforehand, so we.
Right.
Get able to digest it.
Another, another 30 days will give us that amount of time.
Yeah.
To do with, get the information you need well in advance, you know.
Because we have to be able to digest it.
All right, so we're going to continue, now, we don't send out another notice or anything, we're continuing, continuing it 30 days to the June, whatever date that is meeting, does anybody have a date?
Uh, June 9th.
June 9th, okay, continued until then, 5 o'clock, and you're welcome to meet with us, you know, at any time, make an appointment, make an appointment, meet with us, and, and you can get feedback or ask us questions.
I'd be happy to be one of those people, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty valuable.
So do we want?
You're good at it, too.
We want to appoint Lee and Bonnie to be the.
Yes.
Lee and Bonnie will be.
Lee and Bonnie will be.
My wife is going to say, what did you get?
So. Thank you, and any, anything else anybody wants to say in the audience before we go on to other business? And everybody is welcome to stay for the whole meeting, yeah.
I can ask you a question, if this is a public hearing, and you presented in Sally Nichols, 111 Hillary Road, if you, if this is a public hearing and you're presenting, and I understand they're going to change things, but you're telling them things they have to change, I'm rather curious, as a member of the public, what those things are so that we can be looking towards that? I mean, regardless of this development, I have a lot of concerns with the traffic on Mirror Lake, and the speed at which people travel, which obviously is more where housing, is it Airbnb's, is it families? They can tell you the Airbnb's further up the road, the amount of traffic, the changing wildlife coming in because they don't clean up after themselves, et cetera, that impact. So what the purpose is, and how will that impact traffic, police presence, the drainage thing up at the top of the road hasn't been fixed in, I can't tell you how many years, which obviously will impact these gentlemen who have a plan, but it also impacts the people below. If the, does the town have any plans on fixing that, it's not, I don't know how many years, as long as I can remember being there. So the road itself has a lot of maintenance issues, and so now we're on this very sharp turn, that's blind, the traffic coming down from there, I would say Summers with Hubbard, Hubbard Brook is much higher because they have interns or other folks, and the speed at which people travel, you also have now additional, the, the folks going to the lake and the public usage. So it doesn't just impact that, there's also, you know, a need for a little bit more police presence, a little bit more maintenance of the road, especially when you're going up, the washout on that road is intense.
It's terrible.
It's terrible, and the sides and this and that, and now it's going to potentially be a blind corner, where's the driveway? But if this is a public hearing, I think as a public, we have a right to hear what those 24 things were, even if they may not directly impact the current plan, it's a public hearing, and I think we should hear what your concerns were so as to not waste our time maybe coming back, we, it might ease some of our minds to know that they're going to.
And they, I can, you know, I can just.
Can you just read them right through without any talking?
Yeah.
But I think one thing, we, we have no zoning, so what they do with houses is, it's up to them, you know, we can't control the use, when they use it, who uses them.
Yeah, but what about blind driveways and things like that? It's, Hans's driveway right now, it's a little bit of a blind driveway, and you're going to put two more driveways in that.
Well, they plan on regrading that whole part, it's kind of taking the corner right out, taking and dropping all that.
Fixing the drain, that's all, it's, it's a good speed bump.
Yeah, do you, do you, applicants have anything you want to say, do you have any ideas on any of the things she's raised about?
Something a bit of concern.
We share the same concerns, and we've met with the department head in town to discuss these things. As he just mentioned, one of those things could be regrading the corner there, where it is blind, so that you can see through there. And part of it was that, actually, at the last meeting that we brought up, is we moved one of the driveways further up towards Hans's driveway, where it is straighter, where the grade from the road to the land here is less, so that you're not cutting down through. And so we've made many adjustments in that regard, just to make it a safe disposal, and then obviously, our latest one here would be removing entire driveway.
And, you know, for the, for the speed and stuff like that, I mean, that, that's something that really needs to be addressed with the police department.
No, I know, but it's.
And you can imagine something about the road condition, we have a selectmen here, they can bring that to the selectmen's meeting.
I didn't realize that was a big problem.
Yes.
It's been a big problem.
Scott.
When was the last time you went to a selectmen's meeting, did you think or?
So Scott can look into the road condition.
I haven't, because I haven't heard of any, uh, buddy taking care of it, when people were going to.
I'll do a little research for you.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll try, so.
I will run down through the, I'll run down through them quickly. The easement, remember, I, I just, one of them I mentioned, there was no easement from lot 21 to 24, or 5, but 24, there seemed to have been easement missing there. Then there were some concerns about the emergency vehicle turnaround, and how the emergency vehicle, you know, access and providing their services is going to be handled, and how, how those driveways were going to be maintained year-round, year-round access for the emergency vehicles, obviously, in the winter you have snow. So we had some concern about emergency vehicle access. The 30-foot setbacks for buildings was kind of shy in some places. Utility easements, where were they, and, and where were their location and width, are they in the road, or where are they? The liability of the town on that emergency vehicle, ooh, no, I think the attorney said we don't, there is none, but that was a question we're making on this, that we had, the liability to the town, the, the number of parking spaces didn't seem to be adequate. The preliminary layout. The preliminary layout, some, remember what you.
I haven't noticed. It, it refer back to four point oh nine and four point one oh.
Okay.
And that, so that's where I said preliminary layout.
Preliminary layout concerns, the right away, uh, concern, some of them didn't seem to be adequate. The setbacks, um, whether there were going to be streets or driveways, that was always all along. And one of the issues, um, are they going to be streets or driveways? Um, and are, are there going to be local streets or not? If there's streets, you have a, a street and then other streets go off of it. So it, it's all of that, remember that waiver issue you were talking about, the driveway versus the streets. Um, uh, and the preliminary consultation and review, um, process, there really hadn't been one, um, and, and quite often there is one before the formal consideration, more work in between, more preliminary work, um, before the complete application is submitted. Um, not all the plans that we thought, um, needed to be submitted were submitted yet. Um, the incomplete, um, application, uh, what?
Well, it's not formally accepted. We, we have not formally accepted a complete application.
Yeah, we haven't accepted a complete application. Um, whether we needed a legal review, that always comes up first. Do we feel like we need expert, um, help reviewing this? Um, the, the public utilities, never mind the, uh, utilities within, in, within the whole public utility access.
Yes, four point oh nine and four point one oh.
And the names and addresses of everybody within two hundred feet and five hundred feet, usually you have all of the, all the people surrounding the development, all of those names.
And the buildings have to be on the plan as well.
And the buildings have to be on the plan, their building, those neighbors' buildings. And, um, location of, um, external easements and buildings, anything, anything, you know, in, in the environment, not only the buildings, but any other easements that exist surrounding, the surrounding area. Um, uh, your plans for phone and electric and services. Um, the D E S certifications, the, the sub service plus any other we need.
Setback lines.
Setback lines. Um, and the fact we didn't have a final plot yet. Uh, some of these are kind of more utility issues, more parking issues.
The only thing that we didn't bring up, and it probably is moot at this point because is the, there was no easement for the hammerhead. Um, and if you're not, I mean, that's probably moot at this point if you're changing that, so.
So more detail, uh, detail, there's, there's detail missing, um.
I just found that tonight, so.
Okay. Because this goes on record forever and ever. Um, and it, it's helpful to the, for the, the folks that are going to be buying in the development to know where all those easements are and, and side jobs, make sure they're getting all those things. So it becomes a, you know, of, of a development that will stand the test of time, a good development, or good features. So anyway, that's it in a nutshell. And he, and his, on his last list, he had better, uh, four point oh nine and he, I didn't, I just had sort of topics. He had the, the exact, uh, location of the, the wordage of these items. All right, enough of that.
Wasn't there some movie of Eric Tershon, Lady Slipper Road, uh, about a road maintenance agreement and how that would potentially be needed? I don't know if there was any more elaboration on that.
There would be, yes. And, and that's something we got to think about. Um, it came up early on.
With the, with the new design, we may or may not.
New design, we may not need it. Came up early on when there were five blocks, so five driveways or five houses. Boy, this is going to be a complicated agreement that needs to be had. And then along the way, it gets down to two houses on a driveway, maybe a less complicated, uh, easement. But yeah, um, you should need to provide details. How are they going to, if it ends up these driveways? How are you going to maintain? How are you going to make an executive decision as to following the driveway and making sure it's, uh, suitable and when something goes wrong? Um, how do you, how, these are going to be private roads, how do you collect the money to pay the contractor you need?
Previous meeting, we did present the small association that would have been created.
Yeah.
And maybe still will be.
Correct.
Probably, right? Uh, to take care of these things, to deem someone responsible, appoint a contact to the town.
Yeah.
And to maintain regardless of the issues that may arise.
Okay, so that, that still is something and we'll look at it further.
Would there be covenants if the association is created?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, they're going to have to have something internally in the association or a something in order to govern.
Association, as I think it's referred to as, um, but yeah, there will be.
There has to be, I know, because it's a private, private group, there have some sort of rules within the group that are, are, are apart from the town. Yeah. Anything else? Yeah.
Early on, uh, you talked about having them putting a road versus driveways. And my question is, are you still considering that a road would be better than numerous driveways? And if they were a road, would that be a town road or would it be a private road?
It wouldn't be a town road because the only way you become a town road is, uh, at town meetings, to be accepted as a town road. It would be a private road. If it ends up being a street or a road, it would be a private street or road. Um, that would, are you, are you still proposing driveways?
Yeah, yeah, we would, yeah.
So that would be one of the factors we'd review and consider and weigh as we deliberated. Once we see the new plan, we would have to deliberate on that, um, issue. Um, you know, that would be one of the things we talk about. And it would, it would boil down to the adequacy of doing it via driveways. Um, is it adequate? You get the job done or do you need a street to get the job done? So that'd be one of the things that we would debate and vote on as a group.
Well, we, we got to follow the regulations.
Right, so long as it, the regulation, if it's okay, whether it's a street or a driveway.
Exactly.
Well, but there are special conditions, uh, because of, uh, Mirror Lake Road and the way it curbed into the property.
And we'll continue to take that into account.
Yeah, the number of the driveways.
We will, that'll be one of the factors we pass over and, and deliberate on, um, definitely.
Right, it needs to meet the regulation.
It needs to meet the regulation. And, uh, that's something we'll have to decide when we see the new plan.
But I think all discussions right now, it's just hypothetical because we don't know where are they coming up, we don't have a plan, so. All that was on this table a month ago.
Right.
It doesn't come, it's a stake in the ground and going forward, so.
Somebody on Zoom wants to say something, so let's hear what they have to say.
Yes, hi, I was just raising my hand. My name's Melissa Roslin, I'm at one fifty-three Mirror Lake Road and just found out about this project and, um, Mike, I have a couple of concerns. Um, traffic increase, children playing on the roads, there's, though you might not see them all the time, definitely children who are playing. And in the summers, we're used to having more traffic, but this is going to increase that tenfold. Um, so safety is a concern for me. And then drainage, uh, with all of these new driveways already, our driveways are getting pummeled from snow and stuff and like, I can't even imagine if that gets dug out, how much worse it's going to be. So I really would be curious what the plan is for building these driveways, how they're going to help create drainage. I have a nice divot in my yard now from the town of Thornton. I think that just decided they're going to street sweep and just put a bevel in my grass, so that's interesting. So I, now hearing about this, I'm like, oh, great, am I going to have a, a yard anymore? Or how's that going to work?
Thank you. And, and those are all things we're going to have to, we're, we're going to write this down, so we get into the.
That's what the drainage plan will, will show.
And I have to do what.
And the new configuration, we'll see what that looks like and with the hydro.
Yeah, because of type of drainage, which is not culvers, we're still not defer everything to the road, right? It dissipates.
Right. And I'll take an orange drop to go check out the road. Out of separation.
And then how is that going to impact the environment if it goes in the back with the brook?
The lady on Zoom has something else she wanted to say, would.
Oh, I'm so sorry, pardon not being there. I, I had to work, I also work from home too and I had a meeting. Um, I, I'm also worried about a little bit of the environmental impact, uh, as well going in the back towards the National Forest and Hubbard Brook, um, how it will impact that as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, we're taking notes and the applicant is hearing it and taking maybe too, Cindy. Um, I'm Cindy A, you may be better, Cindy Thomas, I just remarried the same person. Uh, my house is down on the other side of the bridge, but my concern with the road is with all the heavy equipment we've had coming up, it's coming apart and more construction. That road is, it's going to need help. Now, I've come to this law firm before, in fact, I was assured by Jimmy Fadden that he's going to be addressed.
Oh, please.
So we're, we're going to blame Jeff all this. I thought so too.
Yeah, I do too, yeah.
I got, I understand the problems with the road up at the top, but I think you need to look at the entire Mirror Lake Road because it hasn't been addressed in a long time. More equipment, we're going to have a problem.
Below them is really bad too, the other town.
Because that's Thornton, we can't do it.
Right.
My other question is about groundwater, drinking water. Have they looked at what's available? Because we have a problem at our end. I mean, I just had a new well put in, bracked at five hundred feet and I've got one gallon of minnow. And David just had the same thing across the street.
We have to brack ours as well.
We're wondering if there's enough water available to provide it for these inhabitants. Has anybody looked?
Kielford well investigated? Yep. Their findings, actually, they wrote a long letter. Um, their findings are that it was treatable for five wells. Um, will it be doing one left now? Some of our well calculations are based on a hundred property because it's the closest one.
Yeah.
And his flow rate was actually quite good, so it's interesting to hear that something so close is not.
How far down it was, it was.
They're estimating that they would drill for up between seven hundred and eight hundred feet, right?
Can I, yes, you may, yeah.
I'm Jennifer, yourself? Derek Crispin, I live at one thirty, Lady Slipper Road. We've only lived here for five or six years now, but when we dug our well, um, the well company gave us a map of everybody from the Thornton line up and the entire neighborhood. Some of those wells are fifteen hundred feet deep. So there is an issue with water.
We're down to five, but we've got lots of snow on.
Well, we also only have three gallons of minnow, but there's only two of us, so that's out.
I, yeah, you, you will do your research and, um, we'll get to that, so thanks. Apologies. Um, anything else? Anybody else? All right, we're going to continue this discussion until, um, a month from now, um, June ninth, same time, five o'clock here. Please welcome to come back and thank you very much for working with us and hearing us.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for the participation. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's the one down there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not surprised.
Really?
I'm, I'm not surprised. I think I have to go away now.
And I can't, you know, be a station.
Oh, yeah.
And we have.
So, um. We have two issues that are kind of interrelated, this Zoom discussion on the rules and procedure. Um, we mentioned three rules of procedure items last time, one was Zoom, one was posting, and the third one was, um, terms. Term, terms, Zoom, posting, that was the three main topics. And there might be others in the rules of procedure, remember the process is you bring it up twice and then you can hold on and change the rule procedure. This could be our second.
I had thought to the, of perspective about Zoom.
Okay.
And, uh, I think there are instances where remote attendance can be beneficial for public hearings, particularly for individuals directly involved in the proceedings who may face logistical challenges such as a butter's, labor representatives, professional service people, engineers, whoever needs to participate but can't physically get here, who may not reside or have offices in the local area. And, uh, as an alternative solution, I suggest, uh, using Zoom with an invite only. So if we're going to have a, a Zoom meeting, there's folks that can't get there and not in emergency, because an emergency leaves a lot of wiggle room. But if you are a participant at a butter or somebody that's presenting in the meeting, you could get an invite only feature. Zoom does that. We can set up the meeting, they can send a request to the planning board or to Kathy or whoever's the person that sets up the meeting, and they can provide access to those people when they sign in and their nicknames would be freed like this. Then we could.
And you know their names, right?
Know their names, there's no anonymity. Yeah. This, this approach, it will reserve remote attendance reserved for the folks with a legitimate reason to be there. And it'll also maintain, maintain the integrity of the process and will also keep folks that may not want to be seen or anything in the meeting out of that. But it's, in my opinion, a public meeting by its very nature is inherently public. So if you're at a public meeting, you are in the public, so you try to put yourself out there. But I appreciate that people may not want to be seen, but they can just sit where they're not seen.
Right. I think that's a good compromise.
And I also think that there's no reason for us to post the actual Zoom calls on the website, my two cents. I think that just the meeting minutes are fine. That people don't need to go back and watch the entire Zoom meeting. I think that our meeting minutes really distinctly and definitively.
She's got your straight job.
Capture what happened during the meeting, that it's not like there's, there's no win window, there's no spin, there's nothing on either side or the other. So I think the meeting minutes are sufficient and then we still get to access Zoom and use it for folks that need to be here that maybe can't, and it's invite only.
You may even get a yes vote from me.
Yeah, that sounds.
I, I think that's a good compromise.
I do too.
I, I like it, I like it.
I think it's a good compromise, I would vote.
And I, and I also like having just the meeting minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I, I could go with that. I, I don't want to do away with Zoom ability.
Well, people, as long as people don't abuse it, and this, this keeps that from happening. And we have had, we've had at least one instance since I've been on the board of what I would call it being abused.
Right, we've had, part of these times on this one.
Right, you know?
Yeah.
So I, I like it.
I think I could live with it.
So, so we have, what, we have to talk about this one more time?
Yes, one more time, because the new concept, it was your time number one.
Remind us about this again.
Remind us, okay. Uh, now, um, any other, uh, rules of procedure things? We got the terms and the concept of terms, we talked about, uh, terms, I don't know, did we decide on how many years or on whatever, like.
Oh, for elected officials?
Elected officials.
So that's, here's, here's the, that's a double edged sword, okay? Because you may end up with, um, no one that will do it, right? Scott? No, but I mean, but you, you may end up with that. And so it's a double edged sword. Um, I would prefer it to be, if it was up to me, um, it would be self-regulating and, um. it would not be as formal. It would be, um, and once, once we get into a rhythm of it, it it would become obvious where where the next chair or the next vice chair is coming from with a rhythm. Um, I think to, I think to define it as two years, or two years, whatever it is, not to be, um, I'm not sure I'd like that. I would I would rather just stay small townish and just be, have a rhythm. When it's time, it's time.
I agree. I think sometimes you can really hamstring yourself with a.
With so many rules.
Too many rules, yeah.
Yeah. Length of length of service. So we did that with the near the New England Equine Rescue, and because the veterinarian had it had timed out, we no longer had a vet on the board of an equine rescue because we had put that into the in the in the order, so.
So let's, I I would like it to be self regulating.
Okay.
And and, you know, I mean.
So just leave it alone.
So leave leave it alone, but know that the um, that there's a desire for us to have a change so that um, so that people can learn what Bonnie's doing. You know, what Margaret's doing, because, you know, I don't know. I don't know what he's doing. And and so when it's the next, it's the time for the next one, there's no contention. You know, it's.
I don't even understand what the process is that you go through to get here to be the, to head this up.
Right.
Or what the process is that Mar, you and Margaret go through to come in and.
It's a little work.
Exactly. But we don't know what that is.
Right. And and and, you know, some someday you're gonna choose not to do this.
Right.
And and so you need to pass your knowledge on.
Yeah, exactly. And we had that. Discussion. We had that discussion and I I I agree a thousand percent. I would hate.
What I think we think is the next step is maybe to start trying to think about how we're going to capture that knowledge to be able to hand off that upon you. Because right now, there's nothing to hand.
I think I think that that's the important part. And I would hate to see a a a specific number. Uh, you know, because you could, you could get a really good, a good chair and bad note for three. Oh, my gosh, they gotta get done, even though they're still doing good work. Nobody else wants it. Um, and, you know, um, sometimes I know my my sister and husband have a different situation. But uh they did a government contact for Gitmo, and they they could only sign up for five years. He was an engineer, she's an accountant, five years.
Being down there.
And they gotta leave. And nothing happens for a year, and then they go back. So they have to, because it's been five years. They get kicked out, come back to the states and sit around and go back. And, you know, you don't want to get yourself in in into a situation or an artificial number that doesn't make sense.
But I think we do think we need to be proactive in capturing the process.
I think so too.
I mean, you and I are both up for election. You may choose not to run. You may not be elected, right? And I meant the same thing for me. So we, it should always be someone that is, um, you know, two years.
The selectmen, um, the selectmen take turns at that particular board. Do they still take turns?
No. That's a good job. We let her do it. But but the thing is, well, we we give you up the jobs.
Right, yeah.
Giltfully. I do public works, you know, and we kind of.
And maybe that's something that you could think of doing. Yeah, maybe you could hand something off to one of us one year, and the next year it'll be somebody else that does it. That way we can start understanding and being able to execute parts of the job and then get a comprehensive understanding.
Basically, the selectmen, they'll they'll have their sideboards basically. Yeah, I'm, that's.
Yeah, I I I agree. I get it. I agree. And we need, you know, we need a way to exchange information and and have everybody um equally um involved and, and, you know, unable to step up and and not just one person do it for however.
Yeah. But we told you the same thing that you're doing about it. Let's put that out.
Okay, and then, um, uh, the posting was also a, remember, we had a bit of a discussion about posting, getting rid of the newspaper? We should write that into the, I think we do, into the rules of procedure. Get rid of the newspaper.
Yeah.
So we left something here and get rid of the newspaper.
Get this is get rid of the newspaper. Yeah. This is a second one on that.
Yep. Good.
Okay. So we can incorporate that into the rules of procedure, and the other two are working for probably one more time. Anything else we want to add to the list? To run it two, two times. Anybody think of any other topic in there? All right. Um. So election of offices, what do we want to do there? Do we want to kick that down the road and not have one now or have an election? What do you want to do?
I don't know.
Margaret is not here.
Okay.
Let's let's kick it down the road.
Joe.
Let's kick it down the road.
That's perfect.
And approval of the uh April fourteenth minute.
The only thing that I saw was, nope, never mind. Never mind.
I made I made a motion to reject the request.
I second.
Okay. Any corrections, errors, or omissions? All in favor of?
All right.
Aye.
You mean enough? Um, report of office is selectmen.
I think we just, I don't know. We've got like seven grants going with Horizon, because that's today working on all that water, silver, streets and all that. But I'll definitely put Merrill Lake on my ninety six.
Merrill Lake or.
Yeah, I, you know, I think it 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 probably needs a little attention.
Well, it sounds like it needs a lot of.
I go up the K L A N. It's, you know, it's an old country road.
There was a lot of washout this year on a lot of roads, so.
There was my driveway.
Yeah, I I really destroyed it.
Yes, sir.
Same.
The driveway going into the uh, a price chopper and theater and everything is uh quite a pothole now.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's.
Oh, there's all this.
Does that.
Every year it's, oh, the main driveway.
It's exactly.
Driveway going towards.
Well, last year, uh, the justice is gonna redo that whole thing this year, I guess. Targeted. We had a meeting, I was at last fall, and we're gonna tear that whole thing out.
We don't want to get to that point. Um, okay, earth excavation. Subcommittee, nothing. Cross plane.
That's Margaret usually heads that up.
Yeah. Um, review committees. Do we have any um committees we want to establish that we know for sure? We have a lot of work to do. I mean, we got work on the rules. We probably have work on our subdivision regulation again, but we want to wait until
Yeah.
later.
Right, correct.
Yeah, no changing things.
No, 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 not right now.
Not now. It isn't a good time.
But I think we're gonna have more bigger things.
Well. We got an inquiry, a question. Do you have that? Um, maybe I've got the question of someone um wanting to do a subdivision and the question in the um.
Right away.
Right away.
Right away.
Right what's that back?
It wasn't in.
And and so let, while we're looking.
It's in the subdivision, it's in the subdivision regulations.
Okay.
Well, the.
Is it in here? I think you copied it off. It just came in today, just a little bit ago. Um. Uh, yeah, I took it off.
Actually, it's not in the subdivision regulations. It's in the setback ordinance. I stand corrected. That's your box or off.
I got you. That's right. It's an order to.
It's a setback. It's a setback ordinance.
Yeah. Drivers, if I'd be, I'd have to read it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's that's a that's a selectman thing, it's, it's one of the ordinances you can tell them.
Okay. Um. Anyway, it it's an issue that came in just a little bit ago. Can you find it on the in the emails? I read it off for. Um, I don't think I went back home and copied it off. But it was a question. They're planning a subdivision. I I'd have to go there if I don't want.
Well, we can.
We'll find out. It's gonna be a question. We have to research. It has nothing to do with
Okay.
subdivision, but it's just a question.
Yeah, and we just got it today anyway.
Yeah, we just got it today. And if we find they've raised something that isn't uh clear, uh.
Yep.
Then we can.
Can we look up this mapping on our website?
The.
Area mapping.
I am, I put that in there, and that is the divine property. Oh. And the reason I put it in there is the um restoration, that property is supposed to be restored because it's no longer the the earth excavation permit expired.
I thought that was an alteration of terrain.
And they had to either um restore it or um, or get an alteration of terrain. And because there's no sense in restoring it, they're gonna rip it all apart because they're building up a housing.
I I think it, I think they're just about to stop building that.
So.
Because I know they're working on the water, parkup plans and all that stuff. So I think that's imminent.
The question I had was, um, yes, I think we all agree that, oh, gosh, don't make them restore it. They're just gonna rip it apart because they're building this um housing development that it probably doesn't need to be restored. It's it's gonna be part of that next project. Well, um, the building permits on that next project are almost at the end of their expiration date.
That's true.
And a lot of work, maybe, has been done since we said it had been restored. Um, has has the work exceeded uh what could be considered restoration for a housing project? Or has is the work in such quantities that another earth excavation permit is indicated?
Well, I I think right now it's an alteration of terrain. I think they have they have valid building permits.
Yeah.
Correct. And so nothing has expired that way. Nothing has changed that way.
Right.
For us. And so for us, it's moved, I I think it's.
It's kind of a threat, what this is.
Uh, yeah, I, you know, it doesn't matter if you agree or disagree with it. They they have an alteration of terrain and and they have the building permit and and, you know, I mean, I I don't think I want to touch that one with a with a ten foot pole because that's the selectmen's.
The bottom line is, I think it's gonna be, I I I think we're just about at the flipping point where they're gonna stop building it. But, you know, I mean, right now.
You know how all these things have deadlines and timelines?
Yeah.
And the building permits, I mean, if they're gonna expire, they have to get extensions on them or what have you, or file for new ones, you know, but.
I'll look at that.
That's up to the applicant. That's not even up to the selectmen. It's up to the applicant to.
Look at it. And look at it. Have have they excavated beyond that um.
That's a matter of opinion.
Yeah.
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 The real concern, yeah.
Has has the excavation gone beyond that point in time when we said, yep, there's no need to restore it because uh they're gonna build houses and what they've done.
That's part of the restoration you could do.
I I.
I, you know, the the deadline is in about two days from now uh to act if um if it's in in May, act if you felt there was something to act upon.
I I don't feel that there's anything to act.
So I just wanted to bring it forward because it 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 that part of it was a planned board action.
Well, the thing is, if we're gonna do something, it's gonna be two to two.
Two days before.
It's gonna be tonight. I I don't think, I was that.
Now, I, and like I said, whether or not you agree with it or disagree with it, it's it's been declared an alteration of terrain. There's a there's a valid building permit, and with that, I think that there's nothing that we.
I agree.
Right.
We're on.
Move on. And 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 it's good to go through that discussion and have that already. If anybody, um.
Yeah.
Um, the telecommunications power, I couldn't find out. Kathy um sent um an email and I followed.
Couple of people.
Nobody. We didn't get in there.
And Spockton's texted him.
Three years. Yeah, so I know. I voted no. I voted no on the waiver to term.
He said, uh, I respond to texts better than email to phone calls, so I texted him. And I didn't respond from that either.
So there's no update.
No update.
So we talked twice.
Everything, everything, they're they're cell tower. I can tell you that. What's going on with the cell tower?
Under.
Fire releasing everybody.
Under other business, um, last time I brought up that we don't have alternates here, that we need to recruit some alternates or do something about getting alternates.
Yeah.
Um, and so I don't know what the process is for that.
Well, you sometimes sort of notice. It's still on the on the website page.
Gotta talk to you the lynchors, but you have to do.
Yeah.
If you.
Get a friend. Get a friend. I got a friend.
Oh, she has to get a friend.
If you know anybody, you know, um.
We need alternates.
Let's uh make sure we focus on it, uh notice on the website that we're looking for alternates.
Yeah.
We need alternates.
Yes, we we have no alternates. We need alternates. At least one, yeah.
Yeah.
Two would be great. One is important.
Um, we mentioned before the letter from um
Yeah.
representing Joyce.
Well, Joyce is still here, so she may want to say something about the letter.
And the, yeah, you want to say anything?
Well, actually, I, first of all, just wanted to thank you for your service. I recognize how difficult uh this situation is and, uh, you know, you guys have a job to do and you're doing it, and I have a job to do and I'm doing it, and I hope there's no.
No.
Absolutely.
Oh, okay, you're disagreeing.
The only thing I wanted to bring up was the Zoom. I know I was outside and I don't know if you guys have talked about it yet. But um I don't understand why you're discontinuing it.
We're not.
We're not.
We're.
Oh. We are not. We we, earlier we had a discussion and and what we decided was um Zoom by invitation only, in other words, um.
You let us know.
You let us know you want to come too. We've had instances where people were com- commenting on Zoom, but they wouldn't give their name. So with having someone actually provide their name before saying they want to get into the Zoom meeting, then if somebody wants to get in, then they'll send a better, send a note.
So find out the same thing that you're doing now. I've been to, well, when did this start? Like in October?
November.
I've been to all the meetings since then, and as far as I can see, or maybe it's not complicated than that, but you just kind of, someone turns on the Zoom and people sign in. I know that.
This is what you will need an invitation. You will click the link.
Put my name in, uh, my first and last name in, in order to get on, and then I was in. I didn't have to ask for any questions from the gym.
Right. It won't be like that. You'll, if you want to go to, come to the meeting, you will send a note. We haven't really solidified the process yet, but um loosely, you would send an email in saying that you want to attend the meeting, your purpose for attending the meeting, and then you would get an invite, and then you would just put that link. You would already be listed in as getting an invite. And then it will stop anyone from coming in, commenting without actually signing in, because we've had people that just sign in at Apple phone one.
Yeah, and and have been.
And wouldn't give their name.
Right, a little disruptive.
Yeah. So that's why. This is to control the meeting and make sure everybody that's in the meeting understands who's speaking, that's on Zoom, so everybody knows, just like you guys sign in when you come in.
Yeah, but I mean, I can walk in at the last minute. I can even be late and and sign in and come in. I, you know, depending on my schedule, I might be earlier, I might be later. And I don't, I don't see what the point would be in limiting people um by special indication only. Um, if they want to come to a public meeting, I don't.
They could come in at any time they want, but they would need to just get the invite so that we can ensure transparency of who's on this speaking.
Yeah, and and if you think that you might want to do it, you would get the invite and say, oh, I might want to do it. And so. And so it would fit into your schedule.
Yeah.
So it's not limiting, it's not a special invitation. It puts a responsibility on the person Zooming in.
But the Zoom link doesn't come out in the agenda until Friday and then the meeting's Monday.
It won't, it won't matter. The, the invitation, once you get the invitation, the clip will work. Or once you sign your name. It depends on how we set it up. You either can get it, it's very protected that you get an invitation and only someone that puts that link will get in. Or you will have sent it in and then when your name pops up, she'll, Kathy will allow you into the room.
Does the rest of the town operate the same way? I mean, it seems like it should be.
A lot of towns don't even have Zoom.
Yeah.
Oh, I understand that, but again, with the doc, you do.
Mm-hmm.
So it shouldn't, like, the select board or the.
Each board is.
Public meeting or whatever, shouldn't it be, um.
Not necessarily.
Conforming across all the different commissions and boards.
It doesn't have to be the same. We each, um, have our own rules of procedure. Each, and you know, I, I was just thinking, I could envision some people asking to be on an invite. They're interested enough in what the planning board's doing. Can they, can they get on a list to be?
I, I would, I would not welcome that.
No.
I don't think so. That's a lot of excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, let's see. We got a, a email from, um, Wyndham uh, addressing our attention to some legislative action. I don't know that we, you know, we've been doing it.
It had to do with zoning.
Yeah.
And so my ears flapped over when I read it.
Yeah. And it was addressed to us, you know, our board, so that's.
The land use authority, in other words, they're trying to.